So tell me when you're ready.
I am ready.
The meeting will come to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of this meeting room on the east wall, back in the back, and that is the updated copy. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
All right, if you'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to make my normal announcements that I normally do. Want to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded to be broadcast at a later date. Remember whoever wants to speak this evening, we will need you to come forward up to the podium where the microphone is, and that's once you've been recognized. And when you do come forward, we ask that you state your name for the record, spell your name for the clerk so she'll get your information correct in her minutes. Remember, no swearing or inappropriate language. Be sure you speak clearly into the microphone. We all need to check our cell phones, make sure they're either turned off or in a silent mode, just for courtesy of others. I better do mine. Then I want to remind the commissioners as well to speak clearly and loud enough into your microphones so that those that may be listening to the recording later can hear what you had to say. Our agenda looks fairly short this evening, or at least up until the point that we get to the budget discussion. Then it might go longer. At some point in time, mid-meeting, to the best of my ability, we might take a short break and recess for about eight minutes. So I think that's the announcements for this evening. Our next item is to approve the agenda and consider any modifications. Anyone have any agenda modifications? Have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Do I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda submitted?
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
It just dawned on me, I didn't get copies for the public, and Lisa's offered to make some for me, so we'll get those for everybody here in a second.
Of the agenda?
Of the agenda.
Okay, yeah, that'd probably be good.
I usually have one on her desk and one for Jason, and nobody has one at all, but it's on the door right now.
Okay. Yeah, it was on the door, I guess. My thought is that we'll... That I think we can still go ahead and vote on this, and then if we want to wait...
Right, I just want everybody to know that we're getting it for them.
All right.
I usually do thirty to thirty-five.
Okay.
But not today.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll let you... Oh, you want us to vote electronically, I'm assuming, huh?
I thought we were back to normal for this one anyway.
Yeah, I forgot that. All right.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried, the agenda's approved. Want to remind everyone, the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. I don't believe we have any executive sessions scheduled for tonight, but we never know exactly what might come up, and want to be sure and mention that to you, just in case something does. All right, we'll go on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. We're gonna wait, I think, for that. You want to go ahead and talk about it?
I do.
Okay.
So one thing that I meant to also do was, we advertise for a four o'clock start, but typically, when I have the minutes, I put what time we actually started, and I didn't do that. I put the actual adjourned times on there, but I didn't go through and write down when we started the meetings during the budget workshops.
Previous meetings.
So I've submitted those to you, but if you would allow, approve the consent agenda with me making the corrections of the actual start times.
Of meetings?
Of the meetings for the seventh, eighth, eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth.
Thanks.
And some of them, we were ready for, but some of them, like the day, Tuesday, Tuesday training, we did not start at four o'clock, and I like to reflect that in our minutes, the actual start time.
Just because I think she'll be here in just a second, let's just wait for Lisa, and then that way, if anyone... Here she is. If anyone is looking at the consent agenda, has any thoughts or questions, we can mention it. So I guess, Ms. Kelly, why don't you go ahead and tell us about those start times?
I don't have... Where I take my minutes, I don't have those papers with me right now, but just like Tuesday, the 12th, I believe it wasn't until 4:10 or 4:15. Every, every start of the budget workshops, I had four o'clock on them, which isn't actually when you called the meeting to order.
It was all within a minute or two, I think, except for that one day.
Pretty much, I mean, like, there was a 4:03 or something like that.
We had to clean out the room a little bit.
I advertise for four o'clock for you guys, and that's what all of the minutes reflect, even though we didn't actually start at that time. My, my process is to put actual start time.
Okay.
I would vote for approval of the consent agenda with the changes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, so the motion's carried, so the consent agenda is approved. We will go to the Board of Equalization.
Do the motion.
Yeah. There a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to go into Board of Equalization. We'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. So the first item is to discuss and consider approval of one motor vehicle exemption for Turning Point Apostolic Church in Scotts Bluff.
Okay, so the... Excuse me. The purpose of this is for church functions, transportation to church events, and Heather recommends approval.
What's your tax loss on that?
I'm sorry, I forgot that.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the exemption. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. I have a motion to leave the Board of Equalization.
I move that we leave the Board of Equalization.
Second?
Motion.
Motion and a second to go out of Board of Equalization. We'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. We'll go on to general agenda items. The first item is to discuss and consider bylaw addition. Add commissioners approve grants over $10,000. Oh, I think that's the next one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. So Lana, do you want to cover that one? Come on up.
Excuse me, Tourism Advisory Board, and this isn't a change, it's just we're asking that you guys, and we set our meeting last week, to actually make the document documented part of the bylaws. And we've always, in an unwritten rule, approved, the advisory board has approved up to $9,999.99. $10,000 and above has always, if it was voted on and passed, it's been brought to the commissioners from $10,000 and above. But there's no documentation of that. It's just something that's been, I think Brenda inherited it from fourteen years ago, and no one really knows where that came about. And we'd like to see that it be put in the bylaws. Moving forward, whomever commissioners, advisory committee, directors, they at least have something to fall back on as to why and, you know, why it came about, so.
Okay. So it just confirms what we've basically been doing.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you might stick around, just in case there's any questions.
Okay. I would move for approval.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for approval. Any other discussion?
Were you the motion?
Ken was the motion, I believe. Russ was the second, I think.
No.
Mike was the second, I heard the second, but I'm sorry.
I wasn't in the game.
I'm confusing people. All right, hearing no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. We'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is discuss and consider capital improvement grant for the final phase of the Japanese Hall History Project for $50,000. Brenda?
We received a capital improvement grant for $50,000, and this would help with the delays in bidding the final phase. So they had an additional bid, and of course, as time passed, those expenses became more, and so now they need a little bit more money to finish the project. And this is a shovel-ready project from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. So if the project is not completed, then they don't get the rest of the grant money. And so the Tourism Committee voted, and we decided it would be silly not to give them that money, because then that's just a phase of a project that can't be completed. And we were under the impression that it would be $75,000, but it's for each phase. So the total amount they would be out of is $150,000, and all they're asking us for is $50,000 of that. So we would like to ask you to make the recommendation in favor of the capital improvement grant, and the committee feels that, you know, we have multiple capital improvement projects right now that are in phases two and three, and if we don't help complete those projects and do our part, then they're not going to get finished, and we're going to have tons of projects not finished, and it would not make sense to move forward and start other things until these other projects are taken care of. And Vicki Schepler is here from Kearney, and she has taken care of all of the arrangements with the Legacy of the Plains and the Japanese Hall project up until now. So her endeavor here, and I'm going to let them to explain a little bit more to you about the shovel-ready grant and what the project is going to include.
I'm not very tall, so, anyway. My name is Vicki Sakurada Schepler, V-I-C-K-I-E-S-A-K-U-R-A-D-A-Schepler-S-C-H-A-E-P-L-E-R, and I am originally from this area, so... But this project became very important to us. I think Legacy of the Plains is probably one of the top museums in the state and in the region. And we did allocate quite a bit of money to complete our project. Part of that was the shovel-ready grants, which were $300,000 altogether. We were able to complete the first phase, but when COVID, and we did get the money because of COVID. But COVID really created issues for us. We lost our first exhibit company. We, our original engineering and architect company did not, weren't able to continue. We've just had so many different things that have delayed our project. We were able to finish the first, the building phase, and get the exhibits in so we could open the first floor, but because of the number of activities and things that occurred on the lower level, and the fact that the state fire marshal, we were originally under the impression that we would be able to use the lower level, but they informed us that we could not with a fully functional second exit, entrance to that area. We also needed to make it ADA accessible, so all visitors could come to that area. We, when we originally put out bids, if I could have done this much earlier, I would be within budget, but when we put out bids for that set, that final phase of the building project, we were way over budget by almost $122,000. And, you know, we have received a portion of our shovel-ready monies, but we need these in order to finish and make the final request. They have given us, and I'm probably talking way too much, it's always nerve-wracking when you don't know what your questions are, but it really gives us so many more options for people to come back again. And we have had such great response. I even, I happened to be there one day when I had a couple from France whose wife found us on the internet, but because the Japanese had a unit, an all-Japanese-American unit that was involved in the rescue of Brières, France, and this gentleman was from that area, and they came because of this project. And so, and then with the PBS special that was out about the project, we have had a number of people who have come back, and we have visitors that are coming from all over the nation. Anyone who had an opportunity to attend our grand opening. We had, we think around 1,500, though it's always hard to know, but we had 400 from all over the nation that came to celebrate this opening because they have so many connections to this history and to the people. The basement will allow us to tell more of the local story, even though we do tell some local stories, but Japanese school and other events were in that area. They had boarding houses in that area. And in 2028, we will celebrate 100 years, and we believe that we will, if we can get this done, first I've got to get the building done, that we will draw even more people back to this area, and they will stay now to do research and other things. Questions?
Two things. Thank you for all your hard work. And I know that it wasn't just you, there were a lot of people, but you were, you were the pivot point for getting so much done. I saw the, it was on Nebraska Stories. I saw it, it was excellent, and I, I think I brought it up at the meeting, Dave, how Nebraska Stories really highlight a lot of things that people don't know anything about. And, and I think you're right, I think a lot of folks saw that episode, they came here to do what needs to be done. You've done a marvelous job, you really, really have, of saving this building, getting it out to where people are going to be able to see it, preserving it, telling a story. And I think that's important, the, the story portion of it, because of all the things that happened up to all of that stuff. So, thank you, thank you very much. I, I, it's, it's a gem, it really is, and it's in the right place. It's in the right place.
Thank you.
And you mentioned a couple from France. We had a lot of local guys, served in the 442nd Regimental Combat Team.
Yep.
Their slogan was "Go for Broke." We have one young man who is interned at Discuss Plus Cemetery, that I've visited his grave on a number of occasions, and I've kind of studied the history of the Japanese people in our valley, and as other people, and I think it's awesome that when we can showcase and teach people the history of a community that isn't taught in school. And this, this valley is full of history. And I myself particularly was very interested in the military history of the 442nd, and the fact that they actually rescued a battalion from the Texas National Guard in France. They were totally surrounded and going to be overwhelmed, but 442nd went in and saved the day, so be proud of that, proud of your history.
And my father was a member of that unit, even though he always said he wasn't at the lost battalion, that he was awfully proud, but there were many from the Japanese-American from this area in Nebraska.
And that was actually the most decorated unit in World War II.
Yes.
Be proud of it.
Thanks so much for all you've done, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey Wolf, Director of the Museum, one of the things, Mike, I just wanted to jump up a quick, is we're going to have a veterans section down there, where we have a database where people can go and do research too, on who served, have some of those stories down there also, so that will be a part of the addition. We just don't have space to do it on the main floor, so just wanted to bring that up.
Any other questions or things you're wondering?
I don't think so. Dave, you just will stay up here, because I'm thinking that you're going to be next, but, um, any other questions for, for Schepler? All right, thanks so much. Dave, go ahead with your, whatever else you might want to say.
The only thing I want to add is to kind of the story, what Vicki said with the people from France. I was lucky enough to kind of go over there sometimes and be able to have tours and people that came back, and I had one lady with her son who has not been back to the area in 50 years, and she came back to see, to see the hall, and the, this project, if we wouldn't have done it, this history would have disappeared. We would have it in kind of bits and pieces everywhere, but the family histories, and with so many of them being gone, we really view ourselves as a place where people can come back and be able to do that history. Now, you can do a lot of this online, but be able to go and see the things and touch the hall and actually be in it, there is a, there is a value to that. So we've seen that a number of times, families coming back. And then one other thing, we're working with Brenda and also Tina at the City of Gary, I'm trying to tap into that Japanese nationalist force. Japan is one of the very few countries who the actual government cares about. The immigrants that move to other places, I think it's more of their honor, they want to make sure that the people that are of Japanese descent are, are still doing the right things, and so we've had great support from them, but those Japanese tourists, they come in multiple tour buses, and we are on the way from Hard Mountain, which was an internment camp in Wyoming, to Amachi, which was one in Colorado, and we can tell a really positive story along with that. So we see great potential there, we've already seen it, but it's just going to continue to grow, so thank you guys for your part.
Thanks.
Any questions?
I would move for approval.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right. Motion's carried and got approved. Very good. We'll be anxious to see things happen. It's got to happen pretty fast, doesn't it?
This is trying to, kind of, well, and like you said, I just want everything, Vicki and being interested, but she, all those are going to make this thing through. She's going to have to go along with the days.
Really? Well, congratulations.
Yeah.
Again, well deserved. Well deserved, Vicki. Well, it's important to us to know everything that you did.
Is it fully, fully staffed? Are there any staffing issues? Is it open?
Diane? We always have staffing issues. Volunteers now, we generally have two people at the museum, so we can take over, just like we would with the Weedenman House in Gentry County, that we don't keep open, but we're making it work. But, yeah, we got some really good volunteers, and we're just hoping to be able to do it in the future.
Okay, well, thanks so much. Wish you the best. All right. So the next item is to receive inventories from the assessor and GIS mapping. So...
They were in your pocket. I don't copy them, because some of them end up...
Thick, yeah.
Very, very thick.
Was there any questions or comments on that? I see Roberts in the back room, but, yeah, they're required inventories that have to be done. Any thoughts or questions on those? So we need a motion to receive those, is that correct?
I move that we receive the inventories from the assessor and GIS mapping.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion and a second to receive the inventories from the county assessor and GIS mapping? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Okay, you have five yeses.
All right, motion.
And then I need all of you to sign...
Both of those?
On each of those points.
Okay.
Let Russ get it started on point. These happen to be the things.
Good.
Okay. We'll move on to the old business, and the first item is an update on time clock plus and payroll processes. Ms. Lisa, do you want to cover that?
I spoke about this a couple meetings ago during budget. I really don't have an update right now, I think we're waiting for some more testing that Charlotte has been working to do, certain groups moved over and working with them. Certain groups moved over and working with the agency with a couple of lynchers that would keep running. We run, there's always some.
Didn't you see, was it you or Charlotte? I think Charlotte told me they got Roden Bridge moved over, and it's working out.
We did, we're managing a lot of Roden Bridge right now, as far as payroll processes. And she reconciled all their vacation sick leave and comp time rules that they had. We have the system that's ready. I mean, it's been there, and now the guys are expected to put their vacation time in the system. They're super performant to approve their time. It's, that's a good step. That's a huge step for them.
Good.
They've been very willing to work with us.
All right. So, the next item on the agenda is the USDA Wildlife Services Program.
That's just a placeholder until you guys...
Get it done, get it.
He's coming to your Panhandle District Meeting.
Right.
Hoping that you guys will be with a bunch of other commissioners hearing the same thing at once.
Right, that's September what?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. So, really, we probably will wait to update anything until then.
Well, I just didn't want to forget it, so that's what it'll be.
That's good. I'd rather be reminded about it than forget about it, so. All right, very good. Okay. I think that gets us through the old business. We're down to the section of public comments. Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take action or comments presented this date. So, is anyone here this evening with public comments? Okay, let the record show there were none. The next item is board and staff reports. So, we would start with you, Kelly. Nothing?
Nothing.
Yeah, yours first.
Mike, please.
Yeah, come up and talk.
Sorry. Scotts Bluff County Fair, you know, we just completed that. Our staff is getting ready to head out tomorrow to State Fair, and they're taking projects there. I don't have any data for you yet as far as numbers at the fair awards or whatnot, as they're transitioning to State Fair. The rest of us are getting ready for our fall and winter programming. I'll be doing some programming this fall, the start of the school year with Gearing Public Schools and their Lakes program. Rest of us are well on our way with programming. There's never a lack of work for us, there's always something for us to do.
Thanks. Robert?
Good evening. Just one main update as a board, I know have been waiting. I did get the values certified for the political subdivisions this morning. Sent those out as required by U.S. Postal Service. And where I had emails, sent those out to the political subdivisions. So, that process is complete. We got that done two days early. Tried to get done a little bit earlier, because I know every day counts when you're doing budgets. But we ended up this morning, so that's good news. I think Lisa has updated numbers for the board.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, there are some copies. Do you want to announce the numbers, or?
If you want me to, I can't. I think Lisa's going to, but...
Okay, well, we'll let Lisa do it.
Probably be more in contact with her in conversation.
All right, very good. Thanks. I'm glad that you're done early, and I know it lets several people start working on their, doing more work on their budgets than what they have before. All right, very good. Let's see, Kurt? Anybody else back there? Jason, do you have anything for us?
No.
Okay.
Lisa's here.
Yeah, Lisa, you're back, so do you have anything you want to talk to us about? These numbers, do you want to do that now, or do you want to do it when we do the?
We're going to talk about budgets, so.
Okay, you'll give it?
I think I went around and then you came back, so.
Right.
I'm going to be ready to start budget discussion, I got to get next.
Let's go through the, we need to go through the commissioners here. So, Russ, do you have anything?
Yeah, they finished, I think, 16 miles of chip seal last week. And with all the overlays and everything, chip seal overlays included, I think we're at 21 miles for this year, so it's covered a lot of, covered up a lot of roads, so looking good.
Mike?
I attended a Emergency Management Advisory Board meeting at Military Fire Hall here about a week ago. But I'd also like to mention, our community lost a first responder this last week. EMT by name of Jim Murray. He's a former Scotts Bluff firefighter, currently a Scotts Bluff County Airport firefighter, and Regional West Medical Services EMT. I think we really need to acknowledge his service to the community for a lot of years and keep EMTs, paramedics at Regional West Medical Services in repairs for a while. They're a pretty hurting unit. So, just keep that group in your prayers, do it.
Okay. Appreciate that. I guess if at any point you think we need to do something further to recognize someone, let us know. Of course, all of us had our extra budget meetings last week, which we got through and seemed to... We were, I think, four evenings or three evenings last week.
Oh, last week?
Yeah.
Three.
Yeah.
The week before that, two extras.
Two to five, yeah.
So, we've had several, and then we'll go and extended this meeting tonight a little bit because of it. And then we have some others scheduled, not this week, but the next week.
The 25th and 26th.
25th and 26th. So, keep that in mind, we'll try and be winding it up at that point. And so, just be aware of those. It is certainly, I always tell people that our July, because of real estate tax protest, and then going right into August, our budget items is two of our busiest months for commissioners, especially and staff as well. So, we appreciate all the help that we've got there. We had a tourism meeting last week, and when both of the items that were on the agenda tonight were discussed, I think those went well. Remember that we are two board members short on that board, so they'll be working to bring recommendations to us soon. And so, be aware of that. I think that's all I had on my list.
I wasn't able to make my meetings last week, I have a family issue to be at. Tourism meeting, I thought it went very well, actually. Mike, I understand you had an issue down in Communications? Sheriff did. Here's the problem we got right now, is he's on the 911. I assume that was the communication. I didn't know we had two different boards. At some point, I think we need to combine whoever's on that board. They should be combined. That's fine, but until we do that, I'm still... You are, but somehow I need to know that. Yeah, okay. Anyway, I got a hold of Mike. Basically, what I did was I called Mike, and he said, "That ain't my deal," he said, "That's Ken." Well, I was sitting right next to Sheriff Overman when I said that. And he said, "Would you like me to take the ball on this?" And I said, "Yes, you just take it," and I said, "I'll forget about it." As long as it was handled. Yeah, so I got, I walked away from it, and that's the last I did. Sheriff Overman took the ball, and I said it was taken care of.
Pulling that out.
Now I know that we have two different people. I thought it was the same thing. And that probably needs to be looked at when we go through our committees at the end of the year. I really do.
So, when Russ mentioned that to me, I went to my sheet and...
I didn't have...
He's on the back, talk about...
You guys, if you don't have that list, I do have it on the website, too.
Central Communications is Ken, and like you said, the 911.
I just, I kind of found out about it by happenstance. Well, I didn't think it was that big of a deal, because I just got a call from one of the fire chiefs, saying the sheriff was sitting right next to me when I got the call. And he said, "You want me to take that?" And I said, "You just take it," and I walked. I had the ball for about eight seconds. Other than that, I don't have anything that, like I say, I wasn't able to make the meetings, I have family issues.
Okay. All right. Charlie, do you have anything?
Um, no.
Okay. All right, well, I think that takes care of the board and staff reports, I'm assuming, go ahead.
I'm just letting, I'm going to turn the TVs over to Lisa from the budget stuff. So, I mean, I can still do the polling, but you won't see it on the screen.
Okay. Charlie, the only other question, having nothing also included legislation, I'm assuming.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, I didn't mention it, but I always assume that you'll cover that in your report. Okay, well, with that thought in mind, the next item on the agenda is to continue the budget discussion. And so, Ms. Lisa, we'll let you cover what you would like to do and...
Okay, so like Robert mentioned, we got our new valuation presented out today. Are they about, we were previously at $3,859,59,032. We are now at $4,162,310,000. So, we've been estimating here for the last few weeks that an increase of $200 million, and in actuality, what is it, $316 billion in it over last year. And you can see the growth percentage at .76, and growth value at $29,227,19. And I gave you a packet of information, this is the first page on it, I believe. They're linked together. Fits into some of the information from the Auditor of Public Accounts. I'm sorry, she's...
What did I do wrong?
She was figuring it out. $316,000, or is it $313,000? I don't know. All right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so, hey, Robert?
Yeah.
We're getting disagreeing. I'm going to pull, the next page has come from the packet that comes from the Auditor of Public Accounts. And I'm pulling up my spreadsheet. I don't know, we plug any of this together. Wow. I'm doing a what-if scenario here right now. This is the first page. Now, last year, we had a tax ask of $14,181,000, I think. So, go to my authority computation. Plugging in the new numbers, there's my $14,181,000 growth value divided by the total valuation that came from certification paper. Robert provided a given .76 increase, and we had been looking at, I think, at .5 last year. We are allowed to grow at $107,000, and then there's still that inflation factor in there, $733,000. Those numbers added together. Take my number here now. If we do nothing else, other than add the two growth factor, the growth factor and the inflation. Now, I had in here, and I wanted to, because I kept telling you about the prior year on your authority and how this works. We would have to take, if we would take, we have authority of like $709,000 from unused tax last year that we can apply to this year. But the question that was posed is like, I was asked the EPA Jeff Schreier, how this would affect us next year. So, I didn't want to use the whole $709,000, so I'm just giving you a what-if scenario. $475,000 is what I'd say if I used that amount. We could raise our ask to $15,494,000. What I had plugged into this was $15,493,000. So, anyway, I can ask, bump up to $15,494,000, leaving $521,000 future years. However, I have a schedule. I kept using this number from last week, $709,000, but I only chose to use $475 in my example, $475,000. Total unused authority, $521,000, leaving total unused property tax authority, because I didn't use the whole $709. So, yes, we could use, bump our tax ask up an additional $475,000. We have to report that next year, but we also can use the $234,000. So, we have to take some of that authority away, but we can get some more back. We still have some we can use into next year, is what I'm showing. The difference between $475,000 and $234,000. That was the question that I was asking. Prior year, we would have to report it in the section on top. And I will. The amount that we would choose to use, but we have a little more authority, we can continue to borrow from the years in the past.
But how many years do you get to do that? In two years, it'll be gone?
A couple of years.
Huh?
Just a couple of years, if we get to do that.
And then it's gone.
We're going to use it up, we're going to use it up.
What we use is gone, and then you only have...
You can only use so much in a year, and then they're going to give us that value, but it appears that I was going to have. $475 was two for before, that we would still have to take a couple hundred thousand back next year, but not the whole $475,000.
I don't get it.
I know, it's, you would report $475,000.
Okay.
Here, I can't because I feel like I can't do it.
Right.
But what I do is come down into here, prior year down here now, next year I'm going to put two. I still have available. Is this the only year that you'll have that line? I think it's year 24. Couple of years. And then the formal change again while we get through this new process, is that? Yeah, or else it'll just go away.
There won't always be a prior year unused tax, was going to be my question, then I felt done. There will not always be a prior year, not you?
Unless we have a request where we don't need any exceptions, and we don't take as much as we can take yet.
Okay. Still don't get it, but I don't need to.
Kind of reminds me of putting handcuffs on the cop. The other guy walks away.
Oh, that's awesome.
Anyway, there's...
School's walking away, they're not being restricted like this. Really?
Apply an exception. Another thing that I ran through this particular spreadsheet. The big postpart number. Here's the tax, the heavy tax, $14,178. You take the base limitation, 2%, that's just a given, plus the real growth. You take the base limitation, two percent, that's just a given, plus the real growth percentage of point seven-six. Say, out of pink postcard joint public hearing, we have to keep our tax ask under four hundred and five seventy.
Fourteen, five, seventy?
Right, please stand right there. Right now, after last week's work, I'm at sixteen million, two oh seven. Right here. Two million, two oh seven. And. Yeah, I have. Oh, you know, I did. Anyway, down here at the bottom, I have levy analysis. Current levy, these numbers as they're presented. Sixteen million, two oh seven, would be a point three-six, five-five for general and bond, would be point oh-two, three-eight for point three-eight, nine-three levy. Which, I'm pretty sure we can't, like, if we applied enough exceptions, we could get up to that. But last year's levy was total point three-six-seven. This year's budget at last year's levy would be fifteen million, two ninety-three, fifteen million, two ninety-three. And then compared to what we taxed last year at that levy, would be a point one-seventy-eight. Be ninety-two, ninety-three, or whatever, we're at fifteen million, two oh seven, whatever our goal is at our new.
So to keep the levy flat, we, we need to, yeah, fifteen point two-nine-three?
Uh, that's how I.
Is that what you just told us? And to avoid the pink postcard.
Nine hundred thirteen thousand, nine-nine-five. Let's avoid, the pink postcard would be another seventeen thousand-ish.
Fourteen, five, seventy, you said, for, stay out of the pink postcard.
Right. Fourteen, five, seventy, so considering to stay at, to stay at levy flat, nine hundred thirteen thousand needs carved out. Pink postcard was fourteen, five, so that's another seven thou, seven hundred thousand, so one point six. Ish. Eight point five.
To meet all of our goals, we need to cut one point seven. That means, that means the postcard goal, that means the levy, levy goal.
Did I give you this page? Do pink postcards, one point, one million, six hundred thirty-seven thousand.
And the one million, six thirty-seven does what?
Keeps us out of pink postcard.
That's how much short we are to be.
Pink postcard.
To get it down to fourteen million, four seventy.
And Charlie's been talking about keeping levy flat and nine hundred thirteen thousand. But you would go to the joint public hearing.
So how much have we increased the budget to? Four hundred thousand?
Which, I'm.
How much is the budget, how much higher is the budget this year than last year?
Currently, oh.
Because what, you're asked.
Currently, at sixteen, two oh seven.
No, that's what the total has, what if, just stay out of the pink postcard and subtract from last year. You're fourteen, is fourteen-five or fourteen?
Fourteen, five, seventy, which is about.
We were at fourteen-two last year.
Fourteen. Fourteen, one-seventy-eight.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So the difference is, in order to stay flat, we only get like a four hundred thousand dollar increase, three hundred and fifty.
They gave us three hundred and ninety-one thousand.
That's what I'm asking.
Fourteen, one-seventy-eight plus three hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Well, it's very simple, everybody's gonna have to go back and look at their deal and do some cutting. We might have to cut people, because that's all that we got. That's all there is, and there ain't no more.
Well, I think one of the things that, based upon, based upon what Lisa's telling us is, um, that we, we need to decide where we feel we're gonna wanna be for the final number. And now with the valuations that we have, we should be able to further define that or narrow it down, to where we think we're gonna be. From a, without. So, you said if you plug in four hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we don't add any of the exceptions.
Yeah.
That, um, that total amount would be how much? Fifteen something?
Fifteen million, four ninety-four.
Okay, that's the one down here.
Yeah, I think that's.
On the last page.
You're right.
That's what I thought would be the trigger of the postcard, but that's not.
So, I, I understand why you plugged in four seventy-five. Needed to be, but what is the benefit of, is there a benefit using only four hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Having money to, next year, whatever we put into this line of four seventy-five, has to come away from our taxing authority next year. We don't use it all, at least I have some to lessen the load. That was my theory. I have to report the four seventy-five as being used this year, but we still have two hundred, just under three hundred thousand we can apply next year, so it doesn't, it would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That authority doesn't come back next year.
With that.
And then, assuming we would.
Be able to take two hundred and thirty-four thousand against the four seventy-five, I have to report.
Then assuming we did that, then we'd be down to zero, and then.
Assuming.
We wouldn't be.
Lisa.
Right, wouldn't have any extra to put into that in the future. Basically, it's a shrinking, gonna be a shrinking amount unless similar decisions were made. And. So, the fifteen, four ninety-four, in my opinion, is, um, that's what, putting in the four seventy-five. And to me, that's the absolute maximum that we would want to do. It's not what I want to do, but that would be, I suppose you could go the two hundred and thirty, whatever, thousand more if some, if the majority, two thirty-four more than that, if that's what, um, the majority of the commissioners wanted to do. But I think your thought is, we shouldn't do that, I think you're probably right. And I'm not sure that I'm even totally happy with the four seventy-five, so, um, but fifteen, four ninety-four, in my opinion, is the absolute highest that we would want to go, and we can do that at least legally, would that be true? And still meet the state sheets here that we need to, to meet. So, fifteen, four ninety-four, and then.
It will leave us eight hundred thousand short.
But it would leave us certainly with a mill levy that's higher than what it is now, right?
Yeah.
So, it would leave us a mill levy that's higher than what it is now, certainly would put us into the pink postcard situation. And, um, so the, you know, I, I really believe that we need to try and establish a number here that we're willing to, to go up to. And then, that's gonna put us on a target for everyone to, um.
How much of an increase is that?
You mean if we go up to that fifteen?
Yeah, what's the difference between the current mill we've had last year and the.
But the last year was three-six-seven.
And it would be point three-seven, two-two-two.
Three-seven-two.
Very, very far. What would that be on a hundred thousand dollar?
I should read Robert. That.
Not much, I'd say that much.
It depends which line you mean. You can pick this up and take it. But I kinda wanna, where are you going with this?
If it was a, if it was point oh-oh-one, which is a little more than that, I think, but that's a hundred bucks.
Hundred dollars on a hundred.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Did you get it?
Not significant. Not significant.
Ten dollars a month, or about eight dollars a month.
You know, one, one comment that I'd like to make to the board is that, while it's, I think, the very, um, good goals as far as not going to pink postcard hearing and maintain a levy. I think it's more that county be funded properly, and I think the pink postcard hearing is, is just a thing. You had to go to before. I think this is one of the areas because the budget process has changed, we no longer have, then we have caps. Last year, the budget was taken down a lot of it. Didn't have that. I would just encourage you to, you know, just, um, take so much weight in the pink postcard. Because the counties we thought that you're probably.
You're gonna find this hard to believe, Robert, but I absolutely agree with you.
I do too, I agree a hundred percent.
I, I, I've always felt like that, I know, I know that's kind of been a goal to stay away from that. And, and you're thinking, we have to, we have to, it's not the end of the world.
We've got business to do here, and you're not gonna do it.
Well, you've got businesses to do, and plus you've got increases over the, over the past year.
Everything's increased, and I think we're looking at some more, if these tariffs come down the road, we're not out of the woods yet, we've got.
We don't know.
For another year here.
We don't know what it's gonna be.
No. We aren't even where we need to be yet. Even by doing this, we're a million short, or eight, eight hundred thousand short.
Yeah, so we, this, um, comparison sheet that Lisa gave us, when we compare to other similar counties, and, again, I don't know if these are the counties in our C I R array or exactly.
Yes.
Is that how you come up with them?
Yeah.
So, they're, they're the ones in our C I R array, and at that time, our taxable value was last year's at three point eight. And I'm assuming all of these taxable values noted here are last year's.
Yes.
Taxable values, not the new ones. Um, and I would only say that, um, our mill levy is higher than anyone else's. We're not the, um, well, yeah, I guess we are at, um, the lowest of taxable value. Some.
That makes a big difference.
Two of them at four point two million at that time, will be four point two now.
Billion, right.
Billion.
Billion, yeah, not million, billion. So, um, uh, but we certainly, I'll say, made up for it in our mill levies, so to speak. Um, the next mill levy is at point three-two, we were at point three-four-six.
Says for general.
And so, yeah, general fund, and we were, our tax asking was thirteen point three million. There are certainly some other counties here that are twelve million tax asking, another one twelve million, another one eleven million, and one at thirteen-four, which is about identical to us.
Can I give you some more facts, too?
Was it Lincoln, Lincoln County?
Confirmation wise are almost the same. Lincoln's pretty close, but their tax valuation, but their valuation is higher.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I give you some other facts, too?
Yep.
I utilized Charlotte to do some phone calls. Okay, um, Adams County has one hundred eighty-seven F T Es, full-time employees. We're at like two hundred and twenty, okay? And they have a hundred and eighty-bed jail. Buffalo County has two hundred and sixty-seven full-time employees and a two-hundred-five bed jail.
How many, uh, people?
Two hundred and sixty-seven in Buffalo County. And Adams had a hundred and eighty-seven. Dawson, a hundred and sixty-seven full-time employees, and she's had a jail of one ninety-two. Dodge County, which is Fremont, a hundred and twenty-nine full-time employees, thirteen part-time, and they only have a holding facility. Gage County, a hundred full-time employees. And thirty, thirty-bed detention center. Lincoln County, two hundred and fourteen full-time employees and two hundred and sixteen bed jail. Madison County, a hundred and sixty-two full-time employees. And Platte County, a hundred and fifty-five. Like I said, we're at two hundred and twenty-five.
So what does, what does that tell us?
What does that tell us? We employ more, we have bigger facilities. We, we either support it or we start.
And our jail is how many, two?
Two hundred and eighty.
A and two.
Well, then we have the comm center.
So we have a hundred more in the jail.
When some of these don't pay near into their comm center, like, we have to fund it, what's that?
We have almost a hundred more in our jail than the average jail that you just reported. That's a big difference.
And you know, a part of Earth might be two hundred and eighty, but what do they say that's, it's never at maximum because they have separate, separate, and so many beds are in medical, and they might be the same way, so a hundred and eighty-seven.
A hundred bucks a day for locals. We don't get reimbursed.
Be nice, we have that.
Right, and what's our?
We need to tell the sheriff to quit arrests, arrest on these locals. Chase them to the moral county lineup, let them die.
And our money that the Fed reimburses us is about how much?
A hundred, a hundred dollars a day?
Yeah, I know that, but total.
Oh, you want, you want to know the budget? With, like, three billion?
Approximately, how much does the Fed reimburse us in the detention center?
We have to go to the jail budget.
Because that offsets that, does it not?
It does, it does.
It's off, it's pretty well.
And one thing that might be really helpful in this comparison, I think, I think if you look at population, it's kind of like county is the sixth largest county in the state. We're right, we're number six of these other counties, and let's compare ourselves to five.
By population, Robert?
Yeah, by population, we're, we're the sixth largest county.
And that's what I'm on here, right, our, our.
He's talking about statewide, it's not on that group, not on the group.
The number of residents she has on.
I have on my spreadsheet.
This is, this is the time of year, and the time in the election cycle, where topic comes up where we say, we're not like those other counties. This is Scottsburg County, Nebraska, the Panhandle. We're just not like those other counties, so even though they have the same population, or number of parcels, or other things that are comparable, we are, we are not those places. Look at our, look at the wages of our constituents compared to the wages of those other counties. We have depressed wages, I mean, we, we, this was the argument that was used when we did elected official salaries a, a few years ago. So the, the same argument that we use as a board to, that the, the salaries of elected officials, it's really, um, it fits for this, for this situation also. Now, we're Scottsburg County. We're not any of these other counties that we compare ourselves to. We have more in common with Sioux County than we do with, with Madison County. We have more in common with Banner County than we do with. We have more in common with Banner County than we do with, with, um, Lincoln County. Or Buffalo County. Resources here, the, the value of the land, the, the jobs that are available here are not the same as, as available back east.
The reason I bring up the population is, is the fact that whenever you do, as your population goes higher, your services. And so I think it, while it's not an end all be all, I think it's a date.
Yes.
These, and I only would tell you that as we look at number of residents, um, on this sheet that Lisa gave us. We certainly have Buffalo County at fifty thousand, Scottsbluff County at thirty six thousand. Then Lincoln County at thirty four thousand, Madison County thirty five thousand, Platte County thirty four thousand. So there are one, two, three, four, five, and Dodge County was thirty seven, but we have one, two, three, four, five, six here that are in the thirty five thousand range. Very close to Scottsbluff. Right, so, yeah, so anyway, those, the number of residents are, there are several of them here that are similar. And of course Buffalo County being fifty thousand residents. And of course, they have two hundred and sixty seven employees, is what Lisa said. And, uh, we will say that Buffalo County also, in almost every C I R, um, comparison of wages, they pay more. They pay more than any of these in almost every case. Buffalo County does, which is.
But they got half of, get more residents than we do.
Uh, not, not half again, but it's fourteen million or fourteen thousand more.
Three, three point.
Third one. What's that?
Three point eight million.
Yeah, three point eight comes from, um, federal marshals and then of course.
The transport also.
Right, and then I'm not even counting what we may get from other counties, but I, I would think that's pretty minimal.
I wondered after his discussion the other day.
Right, I mean, it's some, but it's. So we do make some on our detention center because of the federal marshal.
It's shorter for me, but which is not bad.
Right, which helps us offset that expense.
And I don't know whether those other jails are doing the same thing.
Yeah.
There's a few, Lincoln County.
Yeah, they're big enough.
Lexington.
Lexington, and they're not, is Lexington in this?
Yes, that's Dawson.
That's Dawson County.
Dawson. And then on Madison and Platte County, were their jails virtually zero? Cause you didn't mention those.
I didn't mention it. Platte, um, a hundred and eighty.
Hundred, okay.
She wrote down and Madison a hundred and twenty.
Okay. Well, yeah, since I've come onto the board, um, every single time we get to this time of the year, it's, yeah, but we're not like the others. And we're in a major, um, disadvantage to all these other places. And there's no way we can compete with staying at the mill levy that, that, um, that we stay at. And how could we even think about, um, a mill levy that would be where we're at? And, um, but, uh, certainly the, um, Buffalo County with a population of fifty thousand people has two hundred and sixty seven employees. And then they're first, and then of course we're second at two twenty five. And again, I recognize that the jail itself, um, would constitute, um. A number of those, and how many was, we just talked about that the other day. How many employees are at the detention center?
Seventy five.
Seventy five. And, um, there's no doubt that that contributes significantly.
Well, we've said that before. There's more, more, more people putting money in the pot.
More people throw it in there.
That's exactly.
To get it out.
Well, I'm looking at Gage County and of course, there's a whole lot less people putting money in the pot. And how their.
Yeah.
Levy is point two six, I do not know, other than the fact that their jail is thirty.
They might have their bonds paid, you don't.
Do they have the bail tax? They get a sting tax for the.
You don't have bonds, that's a big deal. If they've paid their bond down and they don't have.
And they didn't have, they had like thirty bed detention center.
They may not, may not bond it. I don't know if they got.
Yeah, they might not be bonded. They're the ones that had. They had to pay for the, what, the address, so they just got that paid off a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I thought probably they weren't even paid off yet, but maybe they are.
I think they are.
At least they'll have eight million in bonds to go.
Yeah, that's what I just read here, which I'm, didn't bond it indebtedness. This is nine point eight million. Yeah, which is frustrating.
Which is completely done by the previous board. Previous board gone us there. Twenty percent of our, of our levy goes to bonds taken out by prior board members, prior boards.
We haven't bonded anything in five years.
So what I thought I seen recently was how the mill levy went. And, and I believe it was at a time when the new jail was built with the selling point of, yes, we'll be getting money from the feds. And enough money from the feds to offset a, a lot of our jail costs.
That was the story.
But we went from, we went, we shot right up to, um, our virtual maximum mill levy. And then, um, it danced around in that neighborhood for quite a while. And then, um, it's been coming steadily down, the mill levy has. For. Since about eighteen or nineteen. I guess certainly our, if we have seventy five people in the jail with two hundred and eighty bed capacity. Um, that's part of our larger increase of employees, but we're certainly not. We, before we built the new jail, we had jail employees and communication employees. But not to that extent. Now, we made a decision, we, meaning Scottsbluff County, made a decision at some point that we were gonna build a bigger jail. And it went to a bond issue, I think, and, uh, it was voted on and it was sold. And, um, and we decided that we were gonna build it, um, as a county. And I think we all have to recognize that how we voted individually, I don't know. But the fact is, is that it got approved by a majority of people. And so when it did, then we had to live with that. Now, I'm a little concerned that the, um. I believe, and I've got the articles from the newspaper from back in those days. And what exactly should look exactly what we were sold as far as how much that the Fed's contracts were gonna help lower the.
Big deal with that.
Right. That, some of that Fed money was going to help us lower the cost even for not only the Fed prisoners. But to help cover the cost on some of our local prisoners. And, um, if we can pull that information out, and I'm concerned that in and of itself, again, that that's probably not exactly happening. And I know that our communications, again, um, I wrote down on one of these pages, our, some of our four largest budgets. And we've talked about, um, or I should say the four largest tax asking budgets. And certainly they're at the sheriff's office and the jail. And I believe communications might be in that. Rhodes is in that, and, um, they're some of our largest budgets that it is. Seventy percent of our overall tax asking, probably.
System isn't compatible altogether. When we go through the division, they add those together, right? Maybe as much as Rhodes or more.
But, um, I know some are a lot more willing to say, yeah, but all that being said, let's take it on up. Um, I'm not one of those, and most of you know, I voted against our proposed, um, tax asking last year.
And still went to the part anyways.
It did, but I was the only one that voted.
Right.
Um, that way, and I, so, and I realize that. I realize that, um, there has to be some give and take here. I look at the number of employees versus the number of residents. Um, and then try and, again, each one of those line items that Lisa provided to us has meaning. And exactly how much value that each one of those get in the overall equation, we all have different opinions on.
You know, when I got here, the bond was. And it's been paid down, down to eight. Well, it looks like, well, we'll be eight something at the end of the shirt. It shows the paper on that. We ate something with this shirt.
You read it.
Nine point eight is what I'm seeing.
Okay, well, I thought I seen the eight point.
Eight point eight and then plus interest makes it nine point eight. And I'm just seeing that right here at the bottom of this page.
Yeah, okay, I was looking at the eight eight seventy. And so. Gonna take several more years to get those bonds to go away unless, you know, we bond a bunch of other things. If we don't have some money to work with, we're gonna go back to bonding and this thing is never gonna go away and that.
Right.
Well, we're never, we're never gonna, we're never gonna levy less than what we need to make the bond payment. Those are, that's a separate levy actually, and, and we're never gonna not make the bond payment. And listen, this is, this is. Uh, like a philosophical issue here. Those who say they believe in small government and restrained spending, um, need to stand up and say, that's what I believe in and that's how I'm gonna vote. And we need, we need to stand up for those things. The problems that we're facing are difficult. Because, be, be, because prior boards put us into this situation. This is not something that's gonna turn around in six years, probably eight years. It's probably a twelve year turnaround. Look at those bonds, how far out there do they go? I agree. This is, this is the job I signed up for to, to correct past mistakes. And, and that's what I'm voting for this time around. We need to, we, we, one point, we need to cut one point seven million dollars if we can stay off of the pink postcard. We've done, we've, we've, we've achieved that. We've done that in the past.
We can't just keep cutting money, Charlie. We're gonna have to cut staff. You gotta cut expenses. You just can't keep cutting. That's not how business works. You've gotta be able to make that.
This is a business. This is government. This is not a business. This is government.
Like a business.
It's not just like a business.
If you put in ten thousand, you're gonna spend that.
There's no, I don't have to worry about income. I got guaranteed income. This is not a business. Never sell me on the idea that it's a business.
But it's not a business technically. It's government. But we just talked about the revenue side of the detention center, and that somewhat works like a business.
Sure.
Not all, most of the departments don't have that luxury of revenue.
And, um, the hundred dollars a day we get from federal government to what's our bed prisoners paying, we are billing them for our bodies.
Now, Lisa, I am, so I'm looking at that number at the bottom right here, and it says our bonds are eight point eight. But I thought that we had got our interest rates down to like two or three percent at one time. And that, that interest rate, interest amount cannot be that amount. That's more than ten percent.
That can't.
Well, that can't be right.
That's a. Yeah, I think our interest rate is like point nine, point nine five.
What?
Yeah, it was minimal.
Less than one.
I mean, we got it way down.
Um, yeah, maybe I've got the wrong numbers.
You got the wrong number here.
But, but even then, if it, if we call it two percent, it's.
Um, nine seventy. How's that's the outstanding for the next year?
I would, I don't look at this one. So look at last year.
Get it right here.
Paying a million dollars in interest.
That can't be right. A dollar and eight hundred thousand.
Eight million.
Eight million.
Cause last year, I, I think yours, your line item was seven eighty seven.
I think that's total interest for the.
Duration.
Duration of the bond. Next year we pay a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars in interest and a million, twenty five thousand dollars in principal.
Can't show it there.
And that, that makes more sense. It's about two percent, two to two and a half percent annually.
We need to get that number fixed over here.
That's for the duration of the bond.
Yeah, I don't know how you're using them, but for our, for budgeting, for our annual budget purpose, yeah, it's a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand.
And I got it up here.
That's a big number. That's eight hundred thousand.
Sixty nine, our principal is a million. And what you're looking at is how they want it recorded for the, uh.
For their purposes. And so you're saying that we'll pay off a million in principal next year? And our interest is a hundred and sixty something thousand. Okay, that makes sense to me. That makes a lot more sense to me.
Twelve thousand when I first, or twelve million when I got on the board, and now we're actually around eight million, so we, we've cut it, we've cut it a third.
And she's saying our, we'll pay off a million in principal per year. So we got about eight years left, is what I would suspect.
I'd say a little more, but.
And we, one pays off in twenty thirty one, one pays off in twenty, another one, two will pay off in twenty thirty two. Highway allocation in twenty thirty four, and the most recent jail bond in twenty thirty seven. Do, when children have detention.
So that, you know, when it pays off that highway allocation, that puts money right back into our, I mean, we can utilize that for jail, right?
Or you could, well, highway allocation, I think that goes into the highway allocation fund, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, once the bond goes away, though, we're not paying that, then that lightens up. But we can utilize that money instead of paying a hundred thousand. It's gonna make that bond a lot cheaper.
Well, I, I think our simple story for most of us, that we need to decide, and that's how much are we willing, um, to tax? And are we willing to do the, um. These numbers that, I mean, I think we could come up with several different possibilities again. Um, if we kept the mill levy the same, that would be a tax asking of fifteen point two nine three million.
We did that and went back and took actual expenses from last year. I think we could adjust it.
If we, um, stay out of the pink postcard, that's fourteen million five seventy. If we stay out of the pink postcard, that's fourteen million five seventy. If our tax asking right now that we're talking about is sixteen million two oh seven, or we could be at the, uh. Fifteen.
Fifteen four ninety three. That's where you're gonna get us eight minutes or six minutes or five.
Well, it certainly might be a good time for us to take a short break, because we can do our business, plus maybe think about this a little bit. But I would just say that we need to come up with a number. And, because we've been kinda shooting in the dark, and we've all had a few thoughts in mind, but I think we ought to try and, as a group, come up with a number that is gonna be doable at the end, and then make sure we get ourselves there, one way or the other. Either by cutting in some of the budgets that we still have to look at, and/or then going back to some of those largest of the largest budgets and have to cut more, is kinda what I see.
You need to count them equally.
And that may be.
I don't think we just ought to go and nick the big guys, cause they're big.
The only problem, the only problem with that is, is that we have some people that have brought budgets to us within the three percent. And then we've had some that are even lower than what they were last year.
We're not saying to take them.
And then, and then we've already worked on, say, fifteen budgets already, and that, and they've done some cutting. And then we have some that we haven't worked with at all, and they've done no cutting based upon their initial request. So, we gotta take that into consideration, in my opinion. And I know that all of us have different opinions as to certain departments or whatever have some priorities over others. And I know we've given some favoritism, certainly to police and emergency people. And I, I'm a believer in that. I've always have wanted, I've said recently, and I'll say it again now, and that's that, the one thing that I think that is the highest priority over anything else that we do in the county is public safety. That's our number one responsibility. If we can't protect people from criminal activity and those types of thing in our county, then, I don't know what else would be more important than that. We have to do that first. So, that's my opinion. Now, again, other people have other opinions, and other people have different opinions on how much we can, we can go. Oh, and there's a lot to that, yeah. When we think about, again, the judicial side of that, the law enforcement side of that, communication and detention part of that, and then when we start talking about some of, roads is somewhat an issue of public safety, so.
Roads are the future.
Mitch, I'll give you about two minutes, if you wanna come up.
Mitch Wagers, M I T C H W A W A G E R S. So, Mark, I just, what you just said really caught my attention. I, I hold the same value, more or less, that public safety is the top priority. But I think the, the phrase doesn't hold a lot of water with me, and, and I hope what I'm gonna say makes a lot of sense. I'm a minority in this respect, but I wonder how many other people in this county have been through the same thing. I wonder how much money, county resources, time and money, has been spent to protect people that should have been arrested. Now, in my case, that was a nineteen-time prior person, okay? So, I wonder how much money was spent for everybody to deny that that ever happened. I'm being very open here. I want that to be understood, and I don't wanna provide all those details, cause that's a very long conversation that could be had, but this is not the time or place. But when you call for service, and they don't arrest the criminals, and then later on, they deny it ever happened, I wonder how many people were involved in that? We're talking about the probation office over here, we're talking about the sheriff's department, we're talking about Jase, or, Scotts Police Department. We're talking about a lot of people. So, I understand what you said, and I agree with you, that public safety is important. But if we have a budget problem, then how come all of that time and money is being spent for things that shouldn't ever happen?
Well, I, I understand you may have an isolated incident that, and there may be others that have the same type of things. And we certainly, I'm assuming that you've already expressed that concern to a whole lot of organizations already. It sounds like some being counties, some being cities, some being others. But, well, I appreciate what you're saying. But, in my opinion, the, so, the story is, with whatever money we're giving them, you're suggesting we need to do a better job in at least some areas, so.
I, I would, yeah, I mean, if I just had to arbitrarily pick a number, I'd say close to a hundred thousand dollars was used to deny an event that has video footage and all sorts of things, right? So, my point to that is, that's a big, that's a big chunk of money. And when you start talking about ten thousand dollars here, and ten thousand dollars there, and five thousand dollars here, all that stuff adds up. So, yes, I, I appreciate what you just said, that I think something needs to be done.
Well, I'd be interested at some point, maybe that's what you and I were gonna talk about before, I don't know. But I'd be happy to, or be interested in what your story is and about who, what, where. But, yeah, right now is probably not the time.
Well, but it is, it is a budget concern, right? Talking about the biggest ones.
Part of the budget. And you're agreeing that public safety is high on the list.
I agree that public safety is high on the list. I'm not sure we agree with how that's accomplished, right? But, but I agree. And Russ, I hear what you're saying, I don't.
Let me say something here. We, you heard what our budget, what we're proposing here, between fifteen, fourteen and fifteen million dollar budget. I took all the expenses, I've been going through this stuff, added up to jail, the sheriff's department, I added up the system, I took all that stuff into consideration. You know what that added up to be with all the money that they get in, grants and everything, over seventeen million we're spending for that. And our whole budget's only fourteen. That's seventeen million just to do the judicial, the police, and the sheriff's department, okay?
Right.
Seventeen.
We're, we're gonna be trying to put some numbers together as to what safety, public safety, meaning law enforcement and things related to law enforcement, costs is here in the county. And I'm hoping to have those numbers by the time we have State of Valley address. And it's gonna be, I think, part, the, the address that I'm gonna do. But it, it'll be astronomical when we look at what the county spends, plus the cities.
That's not even.
Plus possibly probation. We'll split those things out. But, anyway, it, it, it's amazing what we spend on that now. And again, it doesn't totally solve the problems. We know that.
So, so my point was to say, I appreciate, it wasn't a, a knock on any of you. I appreciate what every one of you do. It's a tough job. But at the end of the day.
They're not, they're not perfect.
Where everybody else is expecting you all to solve those problems, right? So.
To the best humanly possible.
First thing is, you got to know about them first.
Best humanly possible.
I, I don't know what you're insinuating there, if anything, but.
I'm just saying, if we know about them, if we bring them, bring them to one of them, if we know about them.
I have brought it up so many times with different people, it is incredible. You and I are different situations, so I don't wanna get into that, so. Yeah, I appreciate.
All right, thanks. Yeah, we're gonna take a break. Eight minutes, if we could. And it's, yeah. So, I'm saying six eighteen, I hope we're back.
Are you gonna wait for her if you want to start?
She's gonna turn on.
I didn't know you were here.
Ready?
Yeah.
All right. It's six twenty. We'll call the meeting back to order. One of the things that several have been talking about, and that's us trying to come up with a number that we can agree upon to be the maximum number. And I know we won't all agree, and, but I think we need to try and get as close as we can. Before we do that, Robert has asked, he said he has a couple things that he'd like to mention to us.
Can you spin the microphone over to?
I certainly can.
Thank you, Robert.
So, and I, I asked to, to bring up a couple things I thought were elephants in the room. And I hate that Jason left, cause I wasn't, didn't time this to talk about this when Jason left. But when we think about areas where, hey, we need to cut, we need to be more responsible with our tax dollars, me as, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, I look at these meetings, and I know that we have a county attorney, we have a deputy county attorney, and we have to pay a third-party attorney to come attend these meetings. And that is a responsibility of our county attorney. And I think that should be addressed.
I think according to statute, I've read that.
And I don't, I don't, you know, it, it's no offense to anyone, whether, you know, it's Davey Banks or Jason, it's just, we have a duplication.
According to statute, the county attorney is not our, you don't have to do anything.
I don't believe that.
Is that wrong? Actually, the state, the county attorney is the one who's. The one statute I read says that he's not, you know, he's not our, you know.
I believe that, from a technical legal standpoint, that he is. And I think, from the time period of COVID or before, that representation has diminished significantly. Part of the issue is the fact that he's down two attorney people in his office that, that he would normally have. And I think because of that, part of the discussion was, at one time, that if we could help provide some relief there in these items, that it would free him up more to be involved with his criminal items. And that's, I believe, the reason that it's happened. If it was different than that, I think we would consider it. But at this point, what we certainly were facing was, we, we had no one here with representation. Almost, I would say, ninety-five percent of the meetings for at least two or three years. And I didn't feel comfortable with that. We needed representation here.
In, in the past, we had that representation, back in the Doug Warner days, back in the Derek Weimer days. And they didn't have the staffing issues that he's got now. And then this is the information coming from their office.
Sure.
You know, there were times, even clear back to Ben Shaver, when Ben Shaver was county attorney. Ben Shaver would take the time, or he would find somebody within his office to review a contract, or to do something that needed to happen. As far as whether they're supposed to or not, I'm, I'm not gonna, cause I don't know for sure. But those are back in the days that we had a county attorney that sat here at every meeting. And we were, we would give them information ahead of time to research prior to the meeting, whether it be a contract, whether it be a legal opinion, whatever, whatever. And they were very good about doing that. And then, and then we ended up in a staffing issue with, with the president office. And he just said, I don't, I don't have the people to do it, and I don't have the time to do it. We visited about it, actually quite some time ago, even before we brought Jason on. And, and he was all for it. He said, you guys really need to get some help. You need some legal advice? I can't help you with it, not the way my staff is right now. So, that's one of the reasons we went to, to do what we were, we should have done it quite a while ago, two or three years ago. We just kept putting it off and putting it off. But we did used to have somebody sitting right in that chair every single meeting. Clear back in those days with all those terrible boards that were here, we got all the, all the legal information that we ever needed. And they were always really good about helping us with stuff.
And, and my question is, I have nothing, I mean, I think the world of Davey Banks, and I like Jason. But just it comes to questions, we got hard time, we had to figure out things. It's like, why are we doing this?
Sure.
Do we have a reason? Is it limited? How much are we, I mean, I don't know how much we're spending on it.
I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. I mean, we do.
Five thousand a month, at least, five to ten.
Yeah, I was saying fifty-nine thousand in my mind, and so that's five thousand a month, or sixty thousand a year, possible.
I guess, I have a question to bridge off what he's saying, too. If Ubanks is hiring somebody in the next couple months, and I think he thinks he's hiring someone else, is he anticipating taking it back? We've never asked him.
Well, I, I.
And I'm not sure if he will.
Well, there is no doubt that when we decided to ask for this person, that we talked about the fact that he was two people down, and that was part of the purpose. And with that, when it was mentioned as being part of the purpose, then at, at the very least, that would have insinuated that if we get back to full staff over there, that, that that's gonna have to be looked at. And again, all of our stuff with Jason and their firm, is who we're actually dealing with, is done on a, basically, a week-to-week, month-to-month basis. There is no commitments. We could tell him, in fact, we've sent him home this evening. Kelly reminded me that we should be doing that. And, anyway, we can ask him to be here as much or as little as we want to. We're not tied to any kind of a contract.
Any container.
Right. So, all of that, I think, is helpful. And I guess, if at any point in time up here, we think we need to cut that, it's okay. Part of the other story that I was hearing was from other people, staff, particularly in this building, saying, we have questions, we have legal-type questions, and we present them, but they're not getting answered.
That's, that's absolutely correct, because if I have something, and I do periodically, I have to go to Jason.
Right. And that's.
I don't have to wait because.
You're not getting anything back from the county attorney's office.
And that, and the general fund or is paying for that. You're not getting charged into your office for that. And it's, the way I understand it. And so, he's not only helping the commissioner's side of things, but I hope that he's helping some of the offices downstairs, and maybe, and even beyond that, certainly with the possible sheriff stuff. On, again, thinking of his stuff as more civil matters, he doesn't get involved with any of the criminal issues. Dave's still fully doing those.
We're Dave Short, too, by having him here. I mean, it offsets that expense. It all comes down to.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just questioning.
We need, we need a little bit of guidance.
We're, we're using a third-party attorney for a job of an elective official.
I think it's.
And it is worth, it's worth talking about.
And that's, I think it's worth bringing up, and I think, but that's the reason that it happened.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up from a budget perspective, and I know, I haven't been in all the budget meetings with the commissioners. You know, I was one of those fortunate people to not have an increase this year. But when I looked at the, the budget round one, round two, and Mr. Harris, you mentioned that there were some of these areas that were glaring, okay, as far as increases. There were four or five areas. And, and no offense, Russ, but I feel I have responsibility to bring this up. But when I saw the first cut of the budget, I think the roads department was up eighty-some percent, or maybe, was that, is that right?
I don't remember.
It was a very large number. And we're still at over thirty percent increase in roads. And, well, I, I, I know that you have, you know, that you're very passionate about it, Russ. But I, I don't know that the counties can sustain and do a thirty-some percent increase on the roads. on the roads department.
Well, I think Charlie questioned that significantly during the time period. We were looking at three million something in improvements, projects. And then all of a sudden, that was being trimmed to two million, I think. And then even then, the question was, how much of that can we sustain for the long term? Now, I realize there's lots of projects to be done. There's things that's been not taken care of in some areas for a long time that needs to be. And how we maintain, again, we all have different opinions as to what level of service or projects can we afford. And that'll be an issue that we deal with, but.
Anyway, I just wanted, I just wanted to say that. I felt the responsibility to say that looked grossly inappropriate to me as far as that, that large of an increase on roads.
It needs to look. And we're going to go.
Mark, you were asking for suggestions. I'll give you one, one way that we used to do it back in olden days, is we had, we had a budget, we had a number that we needed to reach, we would sit down and notice from the board to all the departments. We got to the end, and say, this is the number that we're looking at. Here's the two choices. Everybody take a look at your budget, we need to get it to this number. If we don't, then we're going to, we're going to have to go to Plan B. And we have, and that happened one year. We did lay, we laid some folks out at the, at the detention center, because nobody was able to.
We may have to do that.
There was nobody, they weren't able to get any lower than what they had. And, and I'm not saying that we have fluff in the budgets, but I think there's still some room for some, some deductions. I think if everybody just took another look and said, you know, okay, maybe I can do this, we can do this differently, yeah, we, we need to do this, but it may be able to wait for another year, you know.
There's definitely some things in that budget that are not going to stand.
I didn't hear you.
So there's still, there are definitely some things in roads that are not going to stand.
Yeah. And, and unfortunately, if you go to Plan B and start finding these people to lay off, it's not going to be the smaller departments, it's going to be.
It's going to be the big ones.
It's going to be the big ones. And, and I hate to, I hate to, I hate to lose any employees, I really do.
I don't like to do it.
And, and if each of these folks could take a look at their budget and say, I think I can do this, I think I can do this, and still maintain my office, and still maintain, still maintain the services that we're providing. It may not be quite as good as it was last year, but we can still maintain it. And I think the citizens deserve that. They, they still deserve to have good roads, and they still deserve to have somebody answer that phone when they call the communication center. And, and I think those things could be maintained, but let those folks give that to us. Let Robert give that to us.
I don't understand where the increase is coming in at, you know.
Yeah.
That's got to be explained.
And Lisa, I guess one final thing. Lisa and I did talk in our budget, and I know when we had our meeting, Amanda met with Mr. Harris and Mr. Meyer, we talked about that fund for the reappraisal for commercial. So it's, it was three hundred and ninety-five thousand, let's just call it four hundred thousand dollar spend. We've spent two hundred thousand now for this fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six. We don't owe a payment to the appraiser, but in the following year, we will owe the total one hundred and ninety-five, or almost two hundred thousand. My proposal for this year was to have a sinking fund for a hundred thousand this year and flatten it out, a hundred thousand this year, a hundred thousand next year.
If you have money to put in, did you do that?
That's right. And here's, but my, my point is that if push comes to shove, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul, but we don't need that money for this year. But in the following year, we'll need two hundred thousand. So just keep that in mind. So, and I'm indifferent either way. I think it makes sense to level it out, but that's one area of flexibility that I've got.
Yeah, it does. What was your fifty thousand legal fees?
It was supposed to be taken out. Didn't we talk about that on the earlier stage?
In, in.
This was the thing I thought we might need to go into executive session. We talked about it when he wasn't here.
Was it? Okay.
You're talking about contract services?
Yeah, okay. But, and Charlie, you might be right, but everyone called, but I didn't take it out of the others. Thank you.
Yeah, it was, it had something to do with a past appraisal company that had done some work for us.
Potential litigation in your office. It's under legal fees.
I, I don't recall putting fifty thousand dollars in my budget for legal fees.
Okay, so that fifty thousand's not something that.
Yeah.
It started when Angie was here.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't budget, I mean, you put me firmly wrong, so I don't believe I.
You have to go look at your.
Yeah, I don't believe that I budgeted anything for legal fees out of this budget.
So that might have, that might have just been a placeholder that stayed.
I'm not aware of any litigation.
Angie was here, and then.
I would be surprised if that.
We can talk about it.
Okay, is that good?
Yeah, I think we're.
But anyway, anyway, I just want to tell you about, we have that level of flexibility, but we are contractually obligated to pay him an additional one hundred and ninety-five thousand roughly.
And we agreed to that a long time ago.
That's right.
Okay, not necessarily next year, but the year after that, two hundred's got to go somewhere.
Yeah, so twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, we don't have to spend any cash, but in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, we'll have to pay him, finish paying him one ninety-five. And I was budgeting a hundred and a hundred.
Right. And I understand that, I like that concept. The only thing is that Lisa, so you know what he wants to do there, are we able to do that? I mean, because normally in most of the funds, whatever's left over gets put back in.
Oh, yeah, we can move money, you can, we can pay it out and put it in. We have another fund we could reserve for the capital improvements. Just have it sit there.
Do it, you have a way that he can make that happen?
He can make it happen, yes. And then just earmark it that.
I think.
But I just wanted to throw that out there, that you do have that level of flexibility, but we still have the obligation to pay that next year.
And I, I love the idea of doing the hundred and a hundred.
So if we don't pay it, then means he won't do it?
Hmm.
You don't, you don't, you don't buy feeling on that, Robert, I'm sorry.
So.
I hope we're getting our money's worth, that's all I ask.
Sorry to delay, but I just wanted to say this.
So I'd like to get at least two things done here this evening, if we could. I'd like to try and set a, what the tax asking total number that we can agree upon. And apparently it's somewhere between fourteen million and fifteen million or fifteen-five, somewhere in that neighborhood, is what I'm hearing. But I would love for us to try and come up with a number that we can say, that's going to be it, that's what we can vote on and be satisfied with as a group. And some, some of us still won't be totally happy, but where can we be to have at least three votes? And then beyond that, I'd like to talk about who we want to have at our next budget meetings. Which ones have we not seen, and who do we still want to see? So that's the two things I'd like to get accomplished tonight, if we can.
Who do you want to call back, maybe?
Some may need to be called back, some needs to be called for the first time.
Some of those don't have enough significance to change anything.
Well, and we'll decide that.
I'd like to add a third to that, is the amount of money that we need in order to meet the number that we're going to decide. In other words, departments, this is how much we have to cut yet.
Right. Well, we'll know that when we, when we decide how much we're willing to tax for.
But they need to know that.
Then we'll know.
Well, I kind of feel like I sent it out Friday, and I got this first.
That was a great email.
Did you?
I did.
But we can sure throw it out there, it's like, okay, and just give me what, and we'll talk about what Plan B's going to be.
Right.
Or what I could start addressing. You know, so I guess they need to be here.
Don't say you got nothing, because you know that we need to get together, we've talked about it.
Yes, now I'm thinking, I guess.
So, I want to go ahead.
And that's the same, I think, if everybody's, this project is for everybody, elected officials, all the appointed officials, this is how much we're short. This is what we have to make up. So take another look, sharpen your pen, do whatever you need to do, because if we can't get to that number, here's Plan B. We may lose some folks, and we don't want to do that. I, I'm not for doing that, I'll, I'll say that right up front. I would rather, I would rather not buy piece of equipment if we didn't have to this year as long as we're conditioned, as long as we're conditioned.
But once we do it this year, you know value's barely going to go up.
I, I'm.
We'll probably never do it again.
Yeah.
Just where you're cutting, cutting off at the knees, you're going to be careful where you want to cut it off.
So, in my opinion, some numbers that we need to throw out there again. Let's be sure we've got these in our mind and decide, we don't have to decide on these numbers, but somewhere in between here, I think we do. So to stay out of the pink postcard meeting, hearing, we would have to be no more than fourteen million, five hundred and seventy thousand. The next level, the way I see it, is if we wanted to keep the mill levy the same at point three six seven, we would need, that would raise fifteen million, two hundred Then one of the next levels is the one that Lisa, I think, was suggesting, which added the four hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, or four hundred and seventy-five thousand of the previous authority, I'll call it. And that was going to be fifteen million, four hundred ninety-four thousand. And right now, we're at, as she had it, we're at right now in asking from all the funds, sixteen million, two zero seven. Lisa, do you agree with all those?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Pretty much. I'm just going to say, I might be a little different, because I was looking at Robert's budget and had the number, I couldn't, I removed pending, looking at his paperwork to make sure there wasn't something. But then I would say I'm at sixteen one five seven, if it's correct.
Taking that fifty out, yeah.
Yeah.
Sixteen one five seven, we're close enough in round numbers here. So those are some of the numbers I think we need to throw out there, four different steps, and some may, if, some may want to go either side of those. But those, I think, are some numbers that we should start talking about as to where we want to be. And I'll, I'm happy to be the first one to speak of. And that's that I would certainly love to be at the, stay out of the pink postcard amount, but willing to bump it right to the last five thousand dollars. So, but I'm still going to call it for now, fourteen million, five hundred and seventy thousand, is where I would like to be in the overall process. The, so I would just say it that way, but I think we need to talk amongst the rest of us here and see where it is that we can come to a consensus, where you want to be. So, no particular order.
I would, I would say, yeah, I would agree with the fourteen point five seven million. I think that's where we need to be. You know, it's, it's difficult. It's been difficult every, every year we've done this, this has been difficult. And I'm not about to shy away from, we're still going to have to do to get to fourteen five. You know, but it shows restraint for this year. It's, it, it shows, it, it is a restraint for future years. When we, when we practice restraint now, that, that's less money than, that people can spend in the future, based on how our lid works and based on how our levies and our, just based on what comes down from the legislature. We have, we have our work cut out for us, and every time we, we show restraint in the here and now, we are, we are actually doing the taxpayers twenty-thirty a favor and twenty-thirty-five a favor and twenty-forty-five a favor. That's why I believe this, this, this is so important. We need to keep it at fourteen twenty-five. I don't really have any other, I mean, that's one point seven million that we need to get. And I'm just going to be frank, I, I think we can find a million in the roads, I think we can find another seven hundred thousand across the budget. We were really happy with, with the amount of roadwork we got done three years ago. And we were really happy with the amount of roadwork we got done two years ago. And we're super happy with the amount of roadwork we got done this year. I don't think adding another million dollars to it is what it is going to take to keep us happy next year. I think we could do the same amount we did this year.
That need to be looked at, that's where we need to start looking.
We can look to, we, if we can get as much done next year as we did this year, or even just a little bit less.
Or how about, Armin Outer Services, Chip Seal and the villages?
What's that?
Bring in some money helping the cities and villages.
Well, we talked about that, and, you know.
I brought it up and you said every reason no.
There's some legalities we got to look at in there, because if we're going to do that, they can take away our excise. You know, we get, we get, we don't pay excise tax. Once you start becoming a contractor, then you're going to pay excise tax.
I think it's a good idea. We would have to explore any legal situation.
There's a lot to it, but it's a good idea.
It's a good idea, if it's, if it's doable.
I thought right off the bat, Steve said something about personnel, not having people to do it.
And again, I think all those would have to be looked at, because if we took his people away from doing other stuff, then.
Just got to work it through.
Right. Does it pay or does it not?
You got to find out if there's as much profit in it as what it appears. I mean, it all sounds good, you know, but they're really charged. You don't know what your profits are.
We know what we paid to have it done.
We know what, yeah, we don't know, we don't know what the cities are paying, so we don't, we don't pay that, no, we just pay them.
That's kind of my thought. Why do we have to make a profit? Why can't we keep them busy doing something that helps the taxpayer, period?
They, we, we've got to make a profit. If we're going to do it for someone else.
Well, I don't think.
Do you know what I'm, you understand how.
I don't think we're looking just to stay busy.
I'm not saying it right, but.
We can stay busy.
I think we can stay busy without it.
Except for, because David was made, if we don't have these projects, we'll have to cut people, and it's like, why couldn't we look at assisting other entities that we know are just as cash-strapped as we are?
What do we want with this many people if we're not going to do these projects? If we're going to cut this out, next year you're going to have less money. You're not going to have more money next year.
Well, that's what I said.
You're going to have less.
So this is another project, we can.
Once we plateau this out.
Let me just say, let's agree that the concept is searchable, but if we get into every detail of these, we're never going to get anywhere tonight.
So, it was a good discussion.
Right. I think it's something that we could ask Steve to look at and say, hey, can this help? If he can make some money there to help do a project, then, then that could be something that could be helpful. Okay, so I think you got a number from me, I think you got one from Charlie.
And I'm going to have to brief Mark. I think this is the year we need to be responsible, even though I know it's going to hurt, because there's no guarantees next year. As far as I'm concerned, fourteen million, five seventy is a doable number.
Russ, Kim?
Oh, I, I think we're going to, I think, you know, we, we want to keep cutting it back, 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 and every year, everything's going up. Fuel hasn't gotten cheaper, nothing's gotten cheaper, everything's cost more money. We want to go back to last year's expenses, because we're afraid of a little pink postcard. I'm not afraid of a pink postcard. I put my name on outside, and I'll go to the meeting. I'm not afraid of that. But I guarantee you, we want to keep the people, we have, we have a really good team. I think we've got some people here that are worth keeping. And if we continue with this, and we, we keep it down like we're doing, and next year the state comes out and says, okay, And if we continue with this, and we, we keep it down like we're doing, and next year the state comes out and says, okay, guys, whatever your budget was last year, we're gonna stay with that. And that's basically what they're doing right now. If they lock it down again, we are never gonna move it. And we, we can't sustain not moving. We're gonna, we need to move up. I'm not afraid to move up. Fifteen thousand.
And I agree with you, Russ. Yeah, I agree with you. And if, if that mill levy goes up a little bit, I think we just talked about it.
Here, here's where we're headed right now.
Being a hundred bucks more a year or whatever the case might be. I don't think, like, anybody's gonna complain about it.
All of my tax valuations went up three hundred thousand dollars. It's gonna cost me three hundred dollars. It's not gonna break me. I don't like it, but it ain't gonna break me. But, we, we're looking right now, we're looking down the barrel. A whole bunch of things happening in Washington DC. We've got tariffs they're adding on here. Do you guys know where the, what it's gonna do to prices on cell phones and computers and all the things that we buy? This stuff, if it goes through the roof, we're done buying. We, we have no money. I think we need to prepare ourselves, and if we don't use it, we can, we can pull it over. I think we at least oughta look at preparing ourselves. There, there's some big expenses coming down the road here.
I'm, I'm, I'm like you, and I think we're gonna get outmoded, Russ.
I don't know what these terrorists are gonna do, Ken.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, I don't know either.
We got a year, and, cause you know with these terrorists, what they're doing is they're gonna, China's gonna come in here, they're gonna start selling stuff at a way higher market. Until we can put people in that can maintain the factory. We don't have any people to build the products that we're getting from China. So, until this comes back together and meets again, it's gonna take money to make this thing work.
Yeah. If that, if that mill levy goes up a bit, I don't think anybody's gonna go broke over it. But again, I think, I think we're gonna be out full year, so it's not gonna, really not gonna matter, but, uh-
So, which, um, of the fifteen million, which number are we, are you guys talking about or what do you want?
Fifteen, give me those two numbers.
Fifteen four ninety-four.
That's a big one.
It's a big one. Fifteen two ninety-three is keeping the mill levy.
I have no problem getting in the middle somewhere. I'd like to see at least a fifteen two. The other two hundred thousand, I, you know, I don't think is gonna make a whole lot of difference. But I'd like to see us get to the fifteen two. What's your idea, Lisa?
That, that, at least you can say you kept your, trying to keep your levy flat.
And, and, and just by that increase alone, we're still gonna be flat. I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not changing a whole lot. But we still gotta make some big cuts. We're still a long ways from home. We're a million dollars off, yeah. We still gotta cut a million off.
Ken's turn, right?
Excuse me?
What's your idea?
Idea? I, I like the idea. I mean, obviously I don't get a vote in this, but I like the idea of the fifteen point two because it keeps our levy flat. Personally, I think the pink postcard hearing is the wrong.
It is totally wrong. If they wouldn't have put that in, you guys wouldn't even know the difference.
No, but, um, I would only say that we have a whole lot of people, a whole lot of entities, even in this county, that have done that and kept it under their pink postcard amount. There's, last year, how many entities was up there on the stage?
Three.
Five, three.
I think it's usually been at three.
Okay. And so, some are able to do it. Okay, Robin, right?
Just a quick-
You got two minutes.
Quick statement. Um, you guys were talking about, you know, the back and forth with the mill levy. Do you wanna do the pink postcards? We got triple whammied on the pink postcards last year in gearing because we got the college, we got the county, and we got the city, or the school district. And I think people are gonna stomach maybe a little bit of an increase in the mill levy because the pink postcards went out, everybody showed up, everybody said their piece, and they raised it anyway.
Well, at that point in time, the mill levy's been set. It's not, for that year, it's not changing.
But at this point, I think if you're looking at maybe, do we bump the mill levy a little? I think you might be smarter to do that as opposed to the pink postcard. You're just gonna piss people off.
Same thing. In order for both of, we have to, yeah, the pink postcard, you're, you're just there explaining why it's, why it happened.
We had, we had four, four entities at the joint public-
Oh, we got City of Barrett.
We have.
Oh.
We still have plenty of time to do, whichever one we can.
City of Terrytown, City of Minotair, Gearing Public Schools, and we were on it.
Right.
Last year.
Still like to put it back in the hands of the folks that are spending the money.
The unfortunate part, the unfortunate part about this restriction that the legislature put on the county, I think personally were misdirected because these, you know, these new rules with the cat versus the lid don't apply to the school districts.
So, they said, you're handcuffing the cops instead of the trucks.
The, um, of course, there's several things happening. Of course, the state has, you know, applied, what is the money that they're, that they're giving back, uh, towards the schools and we're getting that money back? Was it, yeah, it was a tax credit from your, uh, state taxes, state income taxes. Now it's done, um, at the, um, on the, uh, level of, uh, at the county, yeah. And so, we get it off of our real estate tax. Plus, um, and again, this didn't affect everybody, but those that were in the Scottsbluff School District, they got a substantial reduction from the school district.
They did.
And it really helped, um, those people in the Scottsbluff School District. I did talk to, uh, Mr. Dick the other day, and he said that he thought they were gonna be able to maintain that mill levy or less. So, that'll be helpful for those that live in Scottsbluff School District. Kelly?
Two years ago, we had City of Gearing, the College, Moral Schools, City of Minotair, and Gearing Public Schools. So, there were five. Four last year, five the year before that. And I can keep going. I think the year before that was the first one.
All right. But there's been four or five at, um, at those pink postcard hearings.
We're gonna have to have some increases.
And City of Gearing, maybe.
Either bite the bullet now or bite the bullets later.
So, I think what I heard from you guys is like, in the fifteen point two billion dollar range is where you would be referring to be, and fifteen point two nine three is, this is point three six seven mill levy.
Seven hundred thousand.
So, that would be, uh, a million dollars that we'd still need to cut.
Wait, how much more, how much difference is it from what you, seven hundred thousand?
Um, seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand is a lot of money with a four billion dollar worth, you know, if you're looking at, having four billion dollar worth of tax valuation. It's a small number. You want to bring it, you want to send back the, all the department heads?
Ask the question. Ask the question. I guess, um-
You have three that are fourteen, fourteen five, and two that are fifteen two. We could pull it. We'll let you go, Robert, if you want.
We'd only get a tie out of the deal.
It would help him.
What's that?
Maybe did you lighten the way a little?
Well, there you are. We know what those numbers are.
Well, we know what they are, but we, um, so I guess my question, at least to me, is am I willing to compromise there, anywhere in the middle? And I guess, um, my standpoint is I'm still at fourteen five seventy. Charlie, Mike, anything different from you?
Well, originally I was looking at the fifteen point two nine three. Still kinda leaning that way. I mean, I'd like to be really tight.
I'd like to say we can do thirteen five, but I think realistically, we, we still have, have to have X amount of dollars to run the county.
Probably gonna have to agree with Russ and Ken with this one. I think that's still gonna require a million dollars to be cut from the budget. That's a pretty good chunk of change.
How much, how much did you slide him over there, Russ? Oh, you dropped that on the floor.
Well, they had a, they had a persuasive argument.
So, it sounds like we have three people at least willing to go to what I'm gonna call the point three six seven mill levy, which is fifteen million two hundred ninety-three, which is, means that we need to cut about
Eight hundred thousand.
Nine hundred, almost a million.
Just under nine hundreds.
Well, I think that's doable. We can do that. But I think we need to get our basis up there. In case they ever lock us at a basis, we should hold our basis.
So, that's-
Didn't you hand me a paper one?
So-
I'm having a heck of a time reading my emails.
If everybody's agreeing upon that thought, um, then I think that, um, Lisa needs to communicate that well to anybody and everybody with another email and just say, the commissioner-
Let them find it now.
Have basically decided that tax asking will be no more than fifteen million two hundred ninety-three thousand. And, um, urging departments to, again, take another look, give us any information they can. And if not, if we can't get there by voluntary cuts, then the commissioners will make the decision where the cuts are gonna come.
And we'll cut them. We can do her fast.
Is there any way you can eliminate that two hundred thousand? You know, we're gonna flip most everything. He's gonna come in with it. At least if it's like the last one.
Um, I can send that out.
Let's see where that goes.
How about, how about if, if they can get us to fifteen point two nine three? That'd be great.
Yep.
If they can't, if they can't get us to fifteen point two nine three, we'll take them to fourteen point five.
Now, there'd be an interesting concept.
It's called-
That'd be a pretty good whack.
That means I'll be calling to be there and be up there.
All right.
Can, can you not operate a motor grader, Robert? Just chase, do that when he's way home.
Actually, I'm a heavy equipment operator in the military.
There you, there you go. There's your other guy.
So, that-
Oh, and that they should be here Monday.
What's that?
Would you agree? And they should be here Monday, be, be attending these meetings again.
Are we asking for who to be here?
Yeah. Are you asking for someone or are they volunteering?
Well, I think we need to ask for volunteers. That's certainly, um, that's allowing for a virtual seven percent increase, actually more than that. And, um, the way I see it, seventeen percent of the tax asking
Well, I think we need to do that.
Seven percent higher.
We need to put a two, about two and a half percent on each department and about five percent in, or four percent in a cash reserve. Cash reserves, sure. You guys want the cash reserve. I'm not a cash reserve guy. I'm just figuring out how to get you.
I, I, I am a cash reserve guy.
I'd like to see us be able to borrow money and pay it back. That's basically what we're doing, but we're holding, we're holding the taxpayer hostage with the cash reserve instead of holding the bank hostage and just borrowing and putting it back. Borrowing the money we haven't received yet.
And I, I think-
That we're waiting. We're gonna get it.
I think what we could say would be something similar to this, and that's that, that i- if their budgets are more than, we talked about two and a half to three percent originally.
That's where we need to be with that.
If their budgets are more than three to five percent, then their budgets are at serious risk.
With the exception of probably management accountant.
Some, well, there's, there's some situations.
There's gonna be some where it's not gonna work.
Some, right, where something significantly has affected their budget. We'll take those into consideration. But, if they're more than five percent, then then they're at serious risk of us cutting some stuff.
That's kind of what you would have.
I think we should.
We need to go back and look at and see where, what is the, what accelerated the- Are you done, Mark?
Um, so the only question that I see is, um, who do we want here? That particularly that we haven't seen. And, um, I know we haven't technically seen Robert, but you and I both know that his is down.
Yeah. I met with, I met with Heather at three on hers.
Okay, and is hers?
Her, hers is up a bit, but it's more personnel costs because of insurance, things that she didn't even control.
Right. That's what everybody's having to say.
Uh, I don't have it in front of me, Russ.
Three point eight six.
Yeah, I think I got it right here.
Three point eight six.
Uh, that's Heather.
That's Heather.
And she, she cut a ton of stuff out, five hundred here, six hundred here, a thousand here.
Probably just over two.
So, it'll be under the five percent.
It was, it was very insignificant actually.
It'll be under the five.
And Jean was tied up in another, another meeting, so I didn't get a chance to talk with her.
But there's, um, yeah.
We did look at her budget, and it's not, again, significant.
She raised the revenue. She's like, wow.
Yeah.
She apparently is getting some more money in doc stamps that she's gonna be able to show for-
And they're gonna charge more now.
Yeah, it's, it's not very much, but it'll be something, right. And someone said that years ago, um, she didn't get any tax asking money, that, that office.
She had to turn it all back. Correct.
Yeah, they, they were able to do it from doc stamps and whatever other fees.
Yep.
And they never had any tax asking. So, it'd be, it'd be nice to get to that, but apparently she's getting pretty close.
We're not gonna get that way with the insurance rates and everything that's weird fighting.
Well, insurance is going up for everybody. It doesn't matter.
That's ridiculous.
It's, you know, you almost wanna look at South Atture anymore, your, your stuff, you know?
Yeah, oh, we're looking at several of those things.
You're doing that too.
Some of our stuff or some-
Some of your buildings. What we need to do is get some people together and all put up some money for our valuations then.
Be our own.
Cool up whatever we've got in those valuations.
Those, uh-
So, we have some assets.
You know, the bank has a strong opinion as to whether or not I need insurance if I have a mortgage on it. But if they're paid off, no, we're covering them.
Care pays.
Yeah. So, a lot of more cover ourselves.
Money, so we wouldn't take that, it's all my hat.
Right.
I wouldn't do that.
Out there. Are you getting called? Oh. Okay, so, I think that issue of five percent, and if they're off of that, they're the people that need to be here.
I think three and a half they should be here.
What?
Three and a half you should be here.
Oh. I like-
Five percent, you know, like we talked, like, I, I think we need to look, you said we have like a seven percent total.
This, this increase is seven percent.
Okay. So, if we give them three and a half, three and a half should go into the cash reserve. If we give them five, we're only putting two in the cash reserve, and I don't think that's where it ought to be. I think the cash reserve means you guys want a cash reserve, and it's short, way short. We've been taken out of it for a couple of years.
So, uh, Lisa, what he's, what Russ is saying is if your, um, overall increase is more than three and a half percent, that they should, um, plan on being.
But I think if they have time to get it there before, if they can fix it, and they can show her it's three and a half, I'd say they don't have to come back.
Or have some reason, I mean, cause if they couldn't do three and a half, and they have a particular reason why, and Lisa's, like you said, would be a good example, um, then we'll listen to that.
Okay.
Let's do three and a half and then whatever, you know, throw that on three and a half to cash reserve, and that's still back at four. That's still back at four.
That gives-
But they've gotta get it down where they can.
All right. Does anyone have any problem with that thought at this point? Charlie and I are the odd guys out here, but-
Are you gonna get on fifteen two with me?
Well, hey.
So, I probably would vote against it as well, but-
I thought I remembered you saying that you didn't care about the pink postcard.
I don't. Pink postcard in and of itself, I don't care about.
Okay.
But, um, the issue of holding the line on spending, and again, how many taxing entities did you say we have?
Total?
In the county, thirty-some, I think you said, thirty or forty-five.
I sent out eighty-two notice evaluations.
Yeah, but how many of them are tips?
Yeah. And so, so many of them are, are, they're minimal.
There should be a rule on how many tips to be carrying.
So, let's say thirty, and out of thirty, four is on the stage, five is on the stage.
Well, do you remember? Well, do you remember, do you remember last year also, it's because, two of them were there because they had a five thousand total dollar for their whole policy sub?
Yeah, it seemed.
Five thousand total dollars. Put them there. Anyway.
But anyway, my point to even that would be, if those two were out, then there would only be two.
You know, that example when Crowder was up here, you know, and he went up two thousand dollars for his total budget, but it was higher than the two and a half percent. It was a two thousand.
Okay, are we done?
Those, those are the ones that we gotta go, you can stay home, you'll be fine.
Yeah, we can adjust those accordingly, but still build a cash reserve, 'cause that's what you guys ultimately are looking at. You're not gonna build it out of, you know, out of empty pockets. You gotta have.
And.
If you, if you, if you don't change your spending limits at all, people, not the, oh, this official level, employee level, based on the step increase, two and a half percent plus your benefits increase, as if you do change nothing else.
Right, other than.
There ain't no way you can do that out of empty pockets.
Well, and you may not be able to keep doing the benefit like you've been doing.
We may have to cut back some people then.
If, if, if they understand that we want everything as it was last year, maintain, you may not get all the things that you think you gotta have. But if we can maintain and still provide the services that we gotta have, okay, let's move forward.
One other thing before we go, can you give us some, the next future dates that we need to be aware of? At least for two weeks out, maybe three.
The twenty-fifth. Meeting at three.
Or budget.
Our budget works out. The twenty-sixth, we're meeting at three until four thirty, because I'd already called for a regular meeting for preliminary levies, which I only need values from Sioux County now to have those ready for you. I got Scottsbluff and Banner today.
One of the things I'm gonna ask Jason is, can we either somehow manipulate that where we can, after we cover this stuff at four o'clock, can we go back to our budget stuff? And in my opinion, we used to do that by.
I don't know why you can't recess this discussion until.
Recession.
That's perfectly legal to do.
The way I see it, we can go back.
Cause you haven't, you haven't stopped, you just continue.
We recess it till then, then we have that little meeting in between.
Anybody that wants to be here for those budget things, we're still here. That's all that matters.
Right, and they have notice and all that.
That's exactly right. You're, I think you're just fine.
I think you're, so that four o'clock though is for, what'd you call?
We're saying four o'clock. It's at three o'clock.
The first one, three to four thirty, and then, and then four thirty.
The, the, I don't know.
Hopefully five.
I, I think my.
Whatever it takes.
My stuff would take you five minutes if you don't see a problem.
Okay. And, and what do we call that? The?
Preliminary levies.
Preliminary levies.
Or cemetery, fire district cemeteries, drainage districts, and two other things.
So my understanding is, and you're confirming it, we don't have anything else this week, the commissioners stand.
Correct.
Okay?
And.
So twenty-five and twenty-six, and then what's after that? September second or?
September second is our regular meeting.
Right, September second, which is a Tuesday.
September second is a Tuesday.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, we're just.
You won't be here?
At fourth.
A regular meeting?
September second.
What's wrong with first?
Holiday.
The holiday. Monday's a holiday. And so then in September, do you have any dates in that first week or two, besides what you already told us?
No, Lisa, I have to get the, for your.
Final.
And September fifteenth is another regular meeting.
All right.
September fifteenth.
And we have, do we have public hearing September the twenty? Do we know yet? We can't say the place, so. In the center. Did you get an answer? Yeah, I'm gonna like four thirteen, and Ian, please just hold.
So what date is that again? The pink postcard?
I don't know.
It's either the twenty-second or twenty-third.
No matter what, it, that's six oh five PM.
And so, of course, obviously if Charlie and I vote against it, then one of you three would need to be the presenter at that. The way I see it.
Brett's already called for it. He said he would.
He said he would, so. All right. I think those are dates far enough out there for now.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it. Anything else this evening that we need to talk about? If not, meeting's adjourned. Thanks for being here. Yeah, you too.